This is the informal meeting for August 7, 2017. Copies of draft meeting minutes are on your desk and provided to council members and have been posted on the city website. The city treasurer's report for July 31, 2017 is located in the binder at City Hall for Council Review. Committee reports are on your desks. Additionally, the mayor just handed us a somewhat status report on the handicap ramp at Promenade Hill, which is information that was requested by members of this council. So there is a status report of what's going on. Since this was just added this evening, it'll be added as part of our complete packet next week and posted on the website and also provided in the press packets. First order of business is Resolution Number One, which is appointing commissioners of these. May I have an introduction and a second please? Henry, you're still on. The next resolution is accepting a grant in the amount of $2,000 from the Community Schools' federal fund and awarded by the Hudson City School District to assist with summer camp financing. May I have an introduction and a second please? Next is appointing a member of the Conservation Advisory Council for the term of two years. May I have an introduction and a second? Mike, Alexis.
Can I ask a question about that? I don't know Ms. Letessure. I'm sure she's a fine person. Can we get a recitation perhaps of her qualifications for the book, the final version of this resolution?
She's a retired landscape architect.
Perhaps I'm a bit revised position so that's in the record?
Sure.
Is she currently on the CAC?
No, this is a brand new thing because we had one of her members need to...
Oh, she's on the... There's absolutely no explanation for why or why her...
Okay, next is authorizing an amendment to the budget to pay school taxes on foreclosed city-owned properties. May I have an introduction and a second please? Next is authorizing the mayor to sell at public auction or by private sale certain real estate properties acquired by tax or closure. May I have an introduction and a second?
I'd like to speak to council about a particular parcel. It was not listed here as a city... It was not listed on this previous resolution for the city making payments on their taxes, and it's still listed here on our public auction list, and I'd like to ask them about that parcel.
I think it has to be introduced in a second before you can really discuss it.
All right. Just make sure I get that in there.
May I have an introduction in a second please? You're still on. Alexis?
All right. There's a parcel on this list I'd like to ask council about, so we further.
Okay. Do you want to disclose which one it is, or do you want to wait until next week to talk about it?
Parcel ID is 11045-3-23. It's also listed here as the 12 that were paid out, paid taxes for, but it has zero.
Okay. All right. I guess the questions could be answered next week?
Yes.
Local laws, proposed local law number two, introductory number two of 2017, a local law requiring the registration and maintenance of all vacant buildings within the city of Hudson. May I have an introduction and a second please? Mike?
How about these other three resolutions, please?
Wait, we're gonna get to that. It wasn't part of the initial packet. We'll be getting to that at the end. So the first one is requiring registration and maintenance of all vacant buildings within the city of Hudson. Mike, did you introduce that? Did I have a second? Tiffany?
Can we get an updated version of this? I assume there will be one because it's so replete with typos.
Okay.
I'd like to know somebody write besides me.
I did read it.
But I mean, you know, every page has three or four typos on it, and tenses aren't jotted and under drafted, but it doesn't seem totally read through. Thank you.
Next is proposal of a law number three of 2017, a local law restricting the approval of permit applications for property owners with outstanding violations in the city of Hudson. May I have an introduction and a second please? Proposed local law, introductory number four of 2017, a local law amending the city zoning law as it pertains to the definition of a dwelling unit, the off-street parking requirements for certain types of dwelling units, and the allowance for certain additional conditional uses. May I have an introduction and a second? What wasn't in the original packet and is now and is not posted on the website because it came in late today are three other things. The first one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the city union agreement. I know we're just getting a look see of this, but there also attached to it is the unions... There's a summary of what has changed, and there is a letter from the union president giving the union's agreement that these modifications should be made to the current police contract. May I have an introduction and a second? The next thing is setting aside $50,000 to... There's a resolution authorizing transfer of funds to the attorney's fee account. Mayor, would you like to make a comment on this at all?
Well, I mean, I think that the language in it speaks for itself. There are issues related to the waterfront, to the properties adjacent to the waterfront and the South Bay, and the subsequent effects of some actions on the environment and safety and properties that need to be addressed. And it would be in our best interest certainly to set some money aside to hire experts, legal and otherwise, to look at this very closely to make sure that we are moving forward in as wise a matter as possible, because this affects us now and this affects us forever.
Thank you. May I have an introduction and a second please? Mike? You're still on. Thank you. And lastly, is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds to the grant writers' expense account. May I have an introduction and a second please?
The resolution covers not only the transfer of funds, but it also authorizes me to execute a contract with the Bears Group, which would be the newly selected grant writers.
Thank you. May I have an introduction and a second? Any new business from the council? Any new business from the audience?
Madam President?
Yes.
We have a memorandum from the mayor regarding...
Yeah, I mentioned this as being something that we just received as a status report. Would you like to comment on it?
I would like to comment on it. Oh, okay. So we have you two here. I have constituents in the second ward that reside in Scholar Court, Providence Hall, Hudson terraces that are constantly asking about the grant, and they're not... Even though all city buildings should be ADA compliant, this is something that they have been waiting for for many, many years. And, you know, until this letter today, all I can say to the people is ask the mayor. So since we have you both here recording, and they can watch this online, if you can explain to the people.
Sure. I'd be glad to read it aloud. I would like to comment, though, that the first written request or the first formal request I received for a written report of any kind was via resolution in the last council meeting. I never got an email saying, "Hey, what's going on?" I would've been glad to respond, but...
I would say that is totally not true. I have text messages constantly regarding the issue of the grant, so that's not true. We have any communication with you and Sheena.
And there were responses to it.
Yes. I'm excited to have it.
But in terms of like asking for a formal status update, there was never a written request saying...
Well, this is from the council.
Okay, well, that's great, which is why I responded to the report. So if it makes it easier, I'll just bring it into the camera. "City officials and the common council via resolution and with a $120,000 allocation for final design materials and construction costs have all agreed that the city should proceed with the development of a permanent handicap accessible ramp at Promenade Hill. The initial design and renderings were managed by committee with the professional assistance of landscape architect Barbara Rustano. I presented the ramp proposal to the Historic Preservation Commission and received from them approval for a certificate of appropriateness on December 9, 2000..." Sorry, this is wrong. It should be 16. "My office presented grant requests in early February with no success. On May 17, 2017, the city issued a request for quotation for architectural design services for an accessible ramp at Promenade Hill Park. Two firms responded, Teagan Bond for $30,951 and Crawford and Associates for $40,000. On the low end, the springs are total cost for the final design materials and construction to roughly $170,000. This does not include the easement from Evergreen Partners, owners of the terrace apartments that will be required to build the ramp and retaining wall along the north side of the park. At this point, we could begin the final design phase with Teagan Bond for around $20,000. This includes the topographic and utility study, retaining wall inspection, and preliminary plan preparation. The final $10,000 will go for final design and construction documents and bid coordination. Once the process goes to bid, we will be required to execute on the project within 30 to 60 days, depending on the language in the documents of the finalization of the bid process. At this point, we do not have the additional funds secured to complete the final design and construction of the ramp. Interested parties on the council and in the community can continue to pursue funding through private foundations. We also have the opportunity to include the project as part of the final DRI initiatives, something we may want to seriously consider, given the legal fees we may be facing as we navigate the rather complicated situation at our waterfront and in the South Bay. If the council would like to support an immediate start to the rent project, then a budget increase of at least $50,000 will be required." Any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for reading that out loud. I wanted to ask at the final paragraph, you say interested parties on the council and the community can continue to pursue the funding through private foundations. Through the communications that you and I had with Sheena, this is something that you said that you would do.
And I have had no success so far, so I'm not being due any money right now for the So if there are other avenues that I haven't pursued that maybe people on the council might have better access to, I would absolutely recommend reaching out to your contacts to see if something can be done, because frankly, things aren't moving. I mentioned it in a meeting three or four weeks ago in the context of another DRI discussion, but said, "Hey, remember that I submitted this back in February?" So it is coming up constantly, but no one is really fighting at this point. You know, there may be other options for funding, but it would be really great if you do have foundations that you feel you have a personal connection with that might respond better to you, that you could reach out to them directly. Otherwise, we would be looking at pulling that money from the fund balance, which is also a possibility, but we're looking at pulling $50,000 from the fund balance right now to cover legal fees. We don't know if that will be too much, too little. You know, we really have quite a complicated situation that we're looking at, so I don't want to in any way underestimate what might be needed there, but I do think the grant is needed. The great part is that with winning the DRI, this could very easily be one of those initiatives. You know, park spaces, green spaces were highlighted in that application, so that gives us a bold opportunity to do it through that as well.
Who will be joking? Maybe Barrett's office and also HR BTF.
HR?
Hudson Road Grant Management.
Okay. And do you bear it?
They're represented in Barrett's office at Green Mountain. That's a reminder.
So who will make the ultimate decision if we come to the city, to the common council and ask for $50,000, and we delay this or postpone this to the DRI?
We make the decision. See, do we tell the people that they have to wait while...
I'm talking about that. I'm talking about the mechanics of getting this down.
We don't have a city office to work for grant, and we talk to the grant writer on the contract. For now, anyway.
The contract is actually expired now.
So there goes.
So there you go. Certainly, we talk to Sheena about availability of $30,000 when it's coming, if that is a timetable issue, or we go out and ask more than two places for a grant. I mean, Hertz and Tuchanney Foundation has a lot of programs that might address this need, you know, but Tiffany, I mean, if you're, you know, you can write these grants too, and anybody on this council or anybody in the audience who wants to do that can do it.
If any of you have contacts at any of their foundations? I have all of the documentation that we've provided, so I've got all of the renderings and all of the narrative that was provided that you could certainly use.
Anything from the audience? Bill?
Yeah, mine is just more informational. On Thursday at 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., the board of supervisors will be having the first of a few forums that we're going to have currently wide on opiate addiction, some of the things we're doing in the county and some of the other partner agencies that have partnered up with us. So that will be on Thursday, this Thursday, August 10, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Hudson Library.
Anything else?
Good evening. I have a procedural question. The proposed amendment to the zoning code needs to go to the planning board as a matter of law. Would it be appropriate to formally refer it to the planning board now? It cannot be acted on absent a planning board report for a 30-day period.
Well, until this council has read it and had a chance to voice their opinion on it, what is the county looking at, spying the sky until this council decides it behind it?
Yeah, we can't submit it until this council votes to move it along.
We always refer things after the council approves it.
Exactly.
For exactly that reason, because if they, if we give them something to approve, and then we have a conversation and amend it, whether it's a minor amendment, which we do in real time at the formal meeting or in some more comprehensive and material amendment that requires it to go back, not necessarily to committee, but at least for 30 days so it can come back and be reintroduced, and everybody can see the new, the changes, we don't know that that's what we're going to approve.
Are we talking about the local law that we just got today?
I guess so, but I think that's true for every...
Yeah, I know, but you're actually right, John. But the one we just got, was there a hurry on this?
I'm sorry?
Is there an emergency about some...
No, I was posing a procedural question. That was all it was, was a question, and I certainly understand if there desire to make material changes, it would probably trigger the 30-day period. So I guess the answer to the procedural question is that if something in the council otherwise likes the legislation, that would be referred to the planning board at the formal meeting, assuming the...
Well, after a full meeting and a full vote?
But that would be the time at that meeting.
Yes.
Okay. And then there's another piece of legislation that was not submitted, and I don't know how to proceed with it, but it looks like the delay would be substantial, and that is, there really is no provision in the zoning code to get reimbursement of consultant fees associated with planning. The planning board and the zoning board looking at applications and for appeal. And so legislation was written that unfortunately is not submitted to the council, which proposes language that would provide for such reimbursement. Right now, the only right of reimbursement is for subdivision projects and nothing else. And given the potential costs associated with the Colaruso application, to the extent that is, represents consulting money associated with the board review of the Colaruso application, there's potentially a lot of money at stake, and to the extent it's delayed, perhaps it might be wise to try to hold off spending a lot more legal fees for these other attorneys to the extent that these attorneys are viewed as consultants to the planning board in connection with the processing of that application. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anything else in the public? Council?
I'm not a public. Well, okay. Well, I guess nobody did, but maybe for next week we could drop a big thank you for all Sheena Salvino's hard work for the access to that $10 million grant that happened last week, because I don't think there's one person in the city that has done, well, any work, if not all the work, the extremely long and hard hours she's put in to finalize this grant for us and move it all along, and that's the only person we have to thank for it, I think. So maybe we could do a little thank you for her or something, a big bouquet of flowers.
Just accept the dollars.
Yeah.
That could be helpful.
Anything else? Anybody?
Have a good night.
Mayor?
Yes.
We found the, there's a request from the residents on second ward.
Okay. Okay. You have something, someone to introduce?
I can talk to her if she wants to wait, but I want to say it out.
Yeah, is maybe something we could talk about tomorrow? Or is it something that's very urgent?
I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
You're talking to him?
No. The main is to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, my name is Bazem Nooks, and I have a, I want to build in 61 North Third Street, and I want to put in a little restaurants there. And I made the crack agreement that the zoning is going to be a problem for me, so that's what I want to do, see what can be done about that.
Did he tell you what the problem was with the zoning?
Yeah. It's R3, and it doesn't permit any commercial use, right?
Well, it's a commercial building right now.
Right, but a restaurant is not a permitted commercial use in the zone, and it's not a, if it's not permitted, it's a conditional. It's not a conditional use either. You know, we've been working on Economic Development Committee on a overlay to kind of be able to put some commercial zones in the city that don't have them. If you can stick around after the meeting, I'd like to chat with you about what you're doing.
Okay.
We might be able to help you out.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yes, the amendment to the zoning code contains language which would make restaurants and some other specified uses in residential districts subject to planning board approval as a conditional use. So that would cease making existing non-conforming uses wherein there's a desire to change that non-conforming use or what was once a non-conforming use, but the grandfathering is lost due to inactivity, and it hasn't been converted into a residential unit. It allows those uses to become conditional uses, and you would go to the planning board. So that provision would address Mr. Nooks's... So that provision would address Mr. Nooks's issue and then he would have a right to go to the planning board, which would then assess whether it was a net benefit or detriment to the neighborhood and the city. Thank you. That's part of number four.
Yeah, then we'll pull... Okay.
One quick thing, I'm a little late, but I presume that the resolution for the auction was presented to you?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that the dates are blank intentionally. If the council wants to determine the date, if the council does not want to determine the date, we can pick a date and fill that in for next week, but we wanted to give you the option of determining that. I would say we have one property that still has, that is still occupied. They were given an eviction notice, it was a 90-day eviction notice. I don't believe that that expires until 9/26, so I would strongly recommend that the auction be after that period of time because otherwise we have to do it multiple times, which incurs additional costs, but...
Earlier, I think before you came in, Alexis had a question about why the resolution to set up the public auction included a property and that property was not included in the school tax list.
No, it was the other way around. There's an additional property on the school tax list that was not included in the auction and that is because despite the fact that the city took ownership of the property and they were in the redemption period, so they didn't technically own the property, the current occupant declared bankruptcy in the last four days of the redemption period.
You may be talking about different, there's a name here I don't recognize. You may be mentioning, you may be referring to that. I'm talking about one that is listed here with a zero balance not paid by the city.
There was a zero balance on the school tax bill on that one.
They had, they had...
It's a senior, I believe that the senior exemption on that is so high that they literally have no tax bill. I have the physical school tax bills, which I'm happy to bring to show you if you'd like, but that one actually was for $0.
Okay, but I still want to talk to council about this property and I could talk to you after the meeting too.
Okay, well, okay, that's also, that's the property I'm talking about in terms of the 90-day eviction notice as well.
Anything else?
I would like, I would hope that the goal of your restaurant succeeds because we do need a restaurant in that area. There are many wonderful restaurants on Wall Street, but not too many people, local people can afford it, so I know you're good cooking.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I have papers for you to sign before I ask for a motion to a chair.
Motion.
Henry? Tiffany? All on table? Thank you. Close? I wish we could say close.